We're just a couple of minutes from beginning the meeting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Brian Powell will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much for your blessings. What a beautiful day we've had today and how you smiled upon us and how you've had your hand on Springdale. We just thank you so much for that. We ask for your continued protection upon us. We ask you to give us wisdom tonight as we deal with matters. For our city, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. We love you, Lord, and we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, January 28, 2023. We'll start things off by asking our city clerk to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Jim? Mike Lawson?
Here.
The gym's been gone a while.
Yeah, so is Rick Evans. Randall Harriman?
Here.
Amelia Williams, I already got you. This is all messed up.
Need some glasses?
Mark? Brian?
Yeah, I gave the invocation, yes, I'm here.
And Rex?
That's right.
And I'm Mayor Charles McKinney, and I'm here.
And I'm Jeff Harper.
Yeah, Jeff Harper?
You're Rick.
Am I right? Yeah, I'm Rick. Yeah, way back. All right.
Sorry, that threw me.
All right. Are you gonna have to think about that all night?
Well, no.
Is that on every...
This is fixed.
Okay, thanks. All right. Well, we do have a quorum. Everybody's here, so thank you. And we're at item four on our agenda. This is the portion of each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you go to the microphone at the podium. Please clearly state your name and address and keep your comments brief and understand that whatever you bring forward tonight, the council will not act on tonight. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to procedural motions. Oh, I'm sorry. Item five, approval of minutes. Counsel, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'm second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
All right. Thank you. And I'm gonna ask Courtney and some other folks here to... Caitlin, meet us up at the podium?
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, so I appreciate Mayor Sprouse for featuring our department this month. And I just wanted to feature one of the employees in our animal services department that has gone above and beyond and helped us out a whole lot. So for those of you who don't know, this is Officer Caitlin Lindvall. She has been with our organization for almost three years and has grown exponentially more confident and comfortable in her role as an animal control officer and does her best to look out for all of the four-legged residents of Springdale. Recently, Officer Lindvall was at ground zero of the most unpleasant Christmas of my memory and handled the situation like an absolute rock star. She stayed calm, contacted the fire department, got everything handled before I even arrived on scene, and was available to help with initial cleanup efforts and did her absolute best to make sure that all the animals that were impacted by the flood were as comfortable as we could possibly make them under the circumstances. During the most recent string of weather events that the city experienced, Officer Lindvall came to the shelter to help shelter staff take care of all the animals in our care when the city was closed and took the initiative to cover on-call shifts for her teammates that live farther away without being asked. Officer Lindvall has a huge heart for our city's residents and their furry companions, sometimes to our own detriment. So please do us all a favor and come to the shelter and check out Guppy. She is absolutely adorable and neither one of us need to add her to our menagerie. But again, I want to thank Mayor Sprouse for featuring our department this month, and I especially want to thank Officer Lindvall for all of her hard work, compassion, and her big heart. I'm very proud to have you on our team, Caitlin.
Thank you, Courtney and Caitlin. As just a small token of our appreciation, the city for the work you do for our residents and for our department, want to thank you for your hard work and please enjoy that and keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Planning Commission report recommendations. Our Director of Planning and Community Development, Patsy Christie. Patsy, it's all yours.
As you've all heard me say, it's really busy. It hasn't slacked off much, but you're gonna see us a lot in the next few months. The first item on the agenda is a rezoning request for 1.34 acres located at 920 South Thompson Street. The request is to rezone the property from C2 to C5. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C2 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring an emergency.
Can you state what that's gonna be for? Do we know?
Well, it's... Anything that's allowed in that district is allowed in that district. Yeah, C5 allows for entertainment facilities, hotel motel, drive-throughs. That's usually what we see. This, I think, is going to be an entertainment facility. But keep in mind, anything that's on that list is allowed in that district when we rezonate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions, counsel? Anyone in the room need to address this?
You said... Was there any comments from the public at the Planning Commission?
No, there wasn't.
Anyone else? Okay, Denise?
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
No.
Powell?
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Ordinance carries 62, emergency clause carries 80.
We include emergency clauses as usual because there's pending action on these projects. The next one is a request to rezone 14 acres located at 5576 North Oak Street. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to general commercial district C2 and light industrial district I1. In this drawing, if you see that dash line that's at the front or on the right side of the property, it is... That's the property to remain as C2. The rest of it, it will be rezoned as I1. And that little box that's in the back is already C2, so it'll go from C2 to I1. The Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from agricultural district A1 and general commercial district C2 to industrial district, light industrial district I1 and declaring an emergency. There was concerns raised by adjacent property owners, but the concerns they were raising were more of things that will be addressed with the large-scale development plan. Congestion, street improvements, environmental issues with, you know, air quality, water quality, those kind of things will all be addressed with the large-scale development plan when it's submitted. This property includes the buffer along the street of C2 to the industrial area. This industrial area backs up to the railroad, and it's similar to all the other areas that we have rezoned in that same area. So I'll answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Both north and south of it.
Right. Uh-huh. And it'll have C2, the very front piece will be C2, and the back part will be I1 that backs up to the railroad.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments, counsel?
Patsy, this is in what was formerly Bethel Heights area?
Yeah, that's correct.
So just refresh my memory. Oak Street was a street that was in Bethel Heights, and then we had Oak where the water department office used to be.
Well, part of this has been... Part of this has been in the city of Springdale for quite some time on the south portion where the concrete plant is and all those were... Those were... And it was Oak Street then, too. Yeah.
So we have two Oak Streets or what?
No, we have an Oak Street and an Oak Avenue.
The one... Yeah, the east-west one is Oak Avenue.
Right, over by the water department. That's Oak Avenue, and this is Oak Street. Yes. And it's been that way a long time.
Any other questions, comments? How about anybody in the audience? Okay.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Move the merge clause to be adopted.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, merge and clause carries 80.
The next request is to rezone 0.4 acres located at 2975 North Jefferson. The request is to rezone the property from SF1 to MF4. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low-density, single-family residential district SF1 to low-medium-density, multifamily residential district MF4 and declaring an emergency. And this is a piece of property that was in Bethel Heights. That's... You'll see the property all around it that was in Bethel Heights transferred over to an MF4 district as well.
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the merge clause to be adopted.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, merge and clause carries 80.
The next item is a request for a conditional use at 2101 Cambridge Street. The conditional use is for a use unit 36, which is horses kept in a residential area. The property is rezoned SF2. They're requesting to have a horse at this location. Planning Commission reviewed this request. They did submit a grazing plan and shows how the fencing plan and all that's gonna be taken care of to keep the horse at this location. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a conditional use for Roland and Jennifer Hudson's at 2101 Cambridge and set forth ordinance number 4030. As we discussed previously, this conditional use is for this applicant at this location, and it can't be transferred anyplace else or no one else can come in and have a horse at that location without coming back to you all for another conditional use request.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
Patsy, can you go over that conditional use for horses just a little bit? Is there a number of horses and things like that?
There's a minimum size based on grazing area per horse. And I think it's... And I don't have it in front of me. Yeah, one and a half acres per horse.
So there's no limit on the number of horses except for how big the tract is?
Or the limit is you can only have the number of horses that your grazing plan will allow.
The grazing plan can include the... It can include the pond, and it can include the...
Right.
...where the residence is. So it's whatever's outside of the residence and the pond. So since we only have 2.47 acres, that's just one.
Yeah. And we don't have very many of these. If you'll remember, we had one off of Sonic Grove Road or Wagon Wheel Road not too long ago that they had made arrangements for some grazing area off-site, and that's the only other one I know of that we have going on right now.
I'm kinda... Just for curiosity, I... And I may be mixing things up or things may have changed. Have we always done these as a conditional use?
Yes.
Okay.
They've always been done as a conditional use.
I remember one on Silent... No, it was... It was a... I think it... Well, the one I'm thinking of...
There was one on Turner at one time. Yeah, I don't think it's still there.
But there was one on Elm Springs Road in the corner of...
Oak Grove Road.
Oak Grove.
Yeah.
And there was something about it had been... It had not been used for a while. And there was a time... There was a time that if it wasn't used for that purpose and it had gone dormant for so long, then... Is that still in play? I know it's not... It's not...
That's still there.
It doesn't have anything to do with this one.
That's still there.
If it was a non-conforming use, it would have been...
Yeah, it was a non-conforming use, not a conditional use for a use unit. Right.
All right, thank you.
We also had one over there on Ivy Lane, I think.
Right.
But they were asking for a rezone. They wanted to go back agricultural.
Right.
Yeah, it was a... I think it was a rezoning back to A1, and that didn't pass.
Right.
I think this was put into place several years ago because we had some residential subdivisions that annexed into the city that were large enough that had horses on them, and it kind of has morphed through years through this. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve. Anyone in the audience? Okay.
Fugiruse?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carries eight zero.
The next is a waiver of street improvements, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, specifically a sidewalk in conjunction with a large-scale development plan for Push Plastics at 1206 ESI Drive. And they are adding warehouse space on the back and not really changing anything on the front of this project. The Planning Commission recommends approval of granting of the waiver of the sidewalk. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Push Plastic in connection with L-2306, a large-scale development, and that would be with option one.
Move the resolution pass with option one. Second.
I have a question. So whenever they build that, will the equipment go through where?
They'll be accessing through the existing structure into the back, so they're not adding any more docks or any more access on the side or the back or anything else.
So there's no way that equipment or anything would damage any of that sidewalk or curb or gutter on the front?
Not any more than it does today. And if you look at the picture, there's not any sidewalk out in that area, and you can see it's a very small lot. There's not room to get... You know, there would be a little piece of sidewalk on each side of the driveway and a little piece in the middle, so we don't really accomplish a whole lot with sidewalks on this lot. I don't usually recommend for sidewalk waivers, but this one, we're not doing enough to make a difference.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
The next one is a waiver request for curbs, gutters, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with the Mayflower project, which is L-2312 on Kendrick Avenue. And they're asking for a waiver of street improvements along Kendrick. Kendrick is one of those projects that's being undertaken with grant money, and the sidewalks and stuff will be built with that. Planning Commission recommends approval of that waiver. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Project Mayflower in connection with L-2312, a large-scale development.
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve with option one. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
And that project was a little unique in that it also... The side of the project is along OY Road. It's also part of the Public Facilities Board property, and the Public Facilities Board is asking a waiver of street improvements along OY Road for this project in addition to the rest of the property that they own. Planning Commission reviewed this request, and their recommendation to the Planning Commission is to approve it with payment of deliver improvements. That's something that really the council needs to deal with. The title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks that set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Project Mayflower in connection with L-2312, a large-scale development. But this would be the rest of the property on OY Road, not just this one project. Because the Public Facilities Board's...
Move the resolution pass with option one. Second.
Planning Commission recommend three, but your motion is for option one, right?
We have a motion and a second for option one, is that correct?
Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fugiruse?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
All right. Thank you, Patsy. Item nine, Finance Committee Chairwoman Amelia Williams. Amelia?
I wasn't here for committee. Who took that?
I think Jeff did.
Yes, I did. Item nine has to do with funding for purchase of street lighting and waiving competitive bidding. And I'll read the title to that resolution. A resolution to waive competitive bidding and appropriate funding for the purchase of street lighting. And James, could you give us just a little explanation on that?
Yes, this was for 28 street lights that was pulled out of the bond program for the Park Street and Emma that went from Cottle to Emma. So it's like 28 street lights to be added back in that we're gonna install.
And they will be paid for out of the street bond?
Yes.
We got some good news on the street bond here on the last couple of projects, so we think it's important that this is lighted, and we'd like for y'all to approve putting those back in.
So the Finance Committee did forward this to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Move the resolution pass with second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? Anyone?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman? Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right.
You're welcome, thank you.
Item 11, Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance Committee? I'm sorry, I thought we just did 10. That's right, Parks and Rec, sorry Mike.
You're good.
Wasn't trying to leave you out.
Oh yeah. Parks and Rec met last week. We've got one item before us. It was brought forward with a recommendation for approval. There has been, I think, some more information that the mayor's got that he'll share with us. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. "A Resolution Accepting a Grant from the National Fitness Campaign and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign a Grant Agreement."
Okay, thank you, Mike. We, and Chad's here to fill in the blanks, Chad, because there'll probably be some, but we had been approved with this facility. And I'm going to show you a short video here in a moment, so you'll have... I was kind of unfair at the committee that we didn't bring that video to show you all so you'd know more what we're talking about. But before we show the video, I wanted to give you some updated information. The, this grant with this organization was good for either Luther George Park or Murphy Park. And looking at the timelines, they try and push these projects forward real quickly on a quick timeline, once the grant is approved. And there's no way that Luther George Park is going to be ready for this. So I'm proposing that we look at the scaled-down model, which is what you'll see on the video. We were going to do a larger one at Luther George Park. But, and just open this up as an option for Murphy, because the grant is still good for Murphy, but we need to be able to give them an answer pretty soon. And so let's look at the video and then we'll come back and answer any more questions you've got. We ready?
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. With 200 fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere. And we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managid, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. National Fitness Campaign was founded in 1979 when we opened the first fitness court. Redesigned for the 21st century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our Seven Movement Seven Minutes system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganders, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the fitness court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the fitness court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond 200 cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within 10 minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that, from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, presented to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost 1.2 million members across Michigan. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free health and wellness opportunities to our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise $150 million to bring the campaign to 1,000 cities and schools building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free.
Thank you. Anybody else get tired watching that? But I wanted y'all to see that so you'd know a little more, have a better picture of what this is. Chad, we were, what we would propose for Murphy, if y'all decide to put one in Murphy, is the model similar to what you saw right there, without the public art option. It would just be their rap, their basic rap. Chad, you remember the price on that?
I think total price was $125,000.
That's after the $30,000 grant, right? So we did receive a $30,000 grant, but it would still, we'd still be looking at somewhere around $100 and a quarter. And we'd come back to you later with that when we, but that's about all the information that I know to give you. I'm, you know, I know we're spending about a half a million dollars. We've got a 200 and something, about half of that, we have a grant, state parks.
220.
So, but close to, yeah, close to a half million dollar, all-inclusive playground at Murphy. But this would be nice, too, to add to that, if you all want to do it. We could pay for it, I think, out, Kobe out of Park Center side, could we not?
Yeah.
I don't know how much we've got in there for sure.
You have $482,000 in Park Center side.
Okay. If we decide we want the larger model sometime at Luther George Park, we could always go back and seek another grant. So it's really just what y'all want to do. I'm not pushing too hard either way. I think it's good if you want to spend the 125 for, approximately 125 for that.
Is there room for it at Murphy?
Yeah, we picked out a couple spots. Right now, there's a 30, or a 20 by 20 slab where a pavilion used to be, and it's still a slab. We're just going to take that up and put it right there, which basically would be right to the west of the restrooms. It's got lights there and we got cameras everywhere, so I don't foresee a problem with it being there. Now, we did talk about putting it on the north side of the pond, but I don't know if I have enough space. I haven't went out there to measure yet.
How big a footprint do you need?
38 by 38.
It's not really huge, not this basic one.
How much bigger is the other one, the larger one?
It's twice.
It's twice.
But Mark, the exercise area is the same. The big one that we were thinking about putting, and they didn't show it on this video, the big one we were thinking about putting in Luther George Park was basically half, half of it would have been what you saw here, the 38 by 38. And then the other half would have been just open with the spongy floor for yoga classes and that kind of thing. So it would add another use with that. Of course, the cost goes up. I think that's about a $35,000 upgrade.
Right.
And we were thinking that would be really good at Luther George. There's just no way to make the timing work for this grant at Luther George.
Yeah, we're probably still out two years for that to be fully open and then have a ribbon cut.
And we can always come back and revisit that later if it's popular and we want to do that.
Chad, do you have a feel for what kind of usage these courts get in other locations?
I haven't seen, just from what I've seen on that and read about it. I know we could do some outdoor classes through the rec center. You know, we could have the weight classes there and the morning boot camps and stuff like that. We could utilize it like that.
And they do try, and part of their evaluation, the reason they landed on Luther George Park or Murphy, is they do try and place it where it's very walkable. And, you know, we're going to have, when it's finished, the Pride of Springdale Trail, we'll go right by the lake there, Murphy. So I think they knew that also, but...
We also plan to, of course, if y'all approve it, is build some basketball courts and sand volleyball there, too, so.
So that would not interfere, this would not interfere with those?
No, we got plenty of space.
Maybe build a little synergy there where people have more reasons to come.
Right.
What about pickleball?
Yeah, we could put one there, too, Brian.
Hey Chad, is this kind of the digital wall, is all this smaller one and a larger one have the digital wall?
Yes, right.
Yes.
Is that fully available?
It will be. I mean, we can get it to be, I don't know...
That's, it's a good question, Amelia. I don't think we checked on that. I've got to think that's available. You know, they have the app where they can, where you can actually just go and do your own workouts. And, but those are good questions we could ask before we come back.
We'll ask.
Yeah.
I visited with Chad this week and honestly, I was torn after we moved it forward. But after seeing it today and visiting with the mayor and visiting with Chad, I think for the facelift we're giving this park and to add this, if we could come back with basketball and volleyball, the more people we're going to, that's our oldest park. It's getting a heck of a facelift. This certainly can't hurt it, I don't think. I'd like to see us move it forward.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. With...
Yeah, we'll just change.
Changing to Murphy.
For Murphy Park.
Right, we'll just change the resolution to indicate Murphy. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Kerry's eight zero.
And I just saw the mayor walking through there today. There's no telling how much he'd use this.
That's right.
He was walking Murphy Park today.
Has the sidewalk been reinforced?
But you're not doing it for me. But yeah, I might use it.
And to Brian's point, surely, we're going to address pickleball in the bond.
I think with this bond issue, we'll be adding a lot of pickleball.
I promise you, Brian, we are.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mike. Item 11, now we're at Health Sanitation and Property Maintenance. Chairman Jeff Watson?
Yes. The Health Sanitation Committee met and forwarded two ordinances with recommendation for approval. The first one, item 11A, has to do with the raising and removal of a structure on Sunset Avenue at 983 West Sunset. I think, was there some changes made to the ordinance that are not in our, on our notepad?
Yes, there was a slight typo where it said property owner. I think it said LJ's Restaurant. We changed it to LJ S Restaurants, Inc., and added LJ Remainder LLC in parentheses. And then there was a whereas paragraph added that quoted the statute on notice, 1453 903 C6.
So, and you've made that change on both ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. So if y'all remember, at the committee meeting, I had questioned whether that ordinance needed to be changed as far as the name of the owner. And Ernest went back and decided to make a change. I think the most important part was, though, of his change was that he made reference that the notice that we gave was pursuant to state law. So that's in the new ordinance. Has that been provided to everybody else, Ernest?
I don't believe so.
The changes that you made?
Jeff, would you like, there's so many people were gone that night. Would you like for Ernest to kind of...
Sure, I'll go ahead and read 11A. I'll read the title to the ordinance.
Okay.
An ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file lien for the raising and removal of a structure within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, located at 983 West Sunset Avenue, Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance, pass.
Second. Go ahead a little bit.
Well, for the three...
Just some background.
Yeah, the three that weren't at the committee meeting.
I'll give you a shot here in a minute, Larry.
Yeah, on pages 56 and 57 of your packet, council, is a summary of what the city has undertaken since 2020 with regard to this property, because the next item on the Agenda 11B has to do with a cleanup lien on this property. But I wanted to give you, on page 57, is a summary of the actions that the city has had to take on this property beginning in April of 2020. City had to abate ordinance violation on the property after giving notice to the property owner, as shown on the county assessor, county collector's records. Property owner, or the city received, the city clerk received payment for that. There was also an abatement done on May 1 of 20, using the same procedure. City received payment for that. Then in 2021, there was another abatement done on the property. City received payment for that. Then in 2022, the city undertook four different abatements on the property. One in May, one in July, one in August, one in September. The one that was done in May, we actually, this council actually placed a lien on the property. It was paid in October of '22. The lien release was filed last week. Then the other two, the cleanups for July 1 and August 19, are actually the basis for item 11B on the agenda for those two abatements. The abatement that was done on September 16, the city has received payment on that one on October 19 of 2022. The 10A has to do with the raising and removal of the structure that was on the property. Notice was provided using the same information in February of 2022. This council passed an ordinance April 12 of 2022, ordering the, it was ordinance number 5699, ordering the raising and removal of that structure. That was communicated using the same information, was not removed, so the city then took action to remove, raise, remove the structure on the property in July of 2022. And the item that's 11A on your agenda is for the cost of that raising and removal. And Mr. McCready is here. He made a pretty eloquent presentation at committee. And so that's kind of the background of how we got to this point. We, as I mentioned, we did add the language of the statute, which says that notice to an owner is sufficient if sent to the owner's address of record on file with the applicable county treasurer, county collector, or county assessor, which is what we did. And, you know, we got out of one, two, out of eight different actions the city undertook, we got payment for four of them. So that's where we're at.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This has been on and off the agenda several times. Y'all were kind enough to kick it back to committee last week. Thank you for doing that. I'll try not to repeat too many, but since we have some members that were not here last Wednesday, let me try and summarize a little bit of the problems I see with what's going on here. By the way, I'm Larry McCready. I represent LJ Remainder LLC. That is the owner of the property that's affected. I also note that whatever changes were made to the proposed ordinance, I don't think they made it onto the public. So I haven't seen them, so I'll just comment the best I can on what Ernest indicated. But the main point is, the owner of this property, who had its building knocked down and is being asked to pay $20,000, never received notice, period. That's, that is a fact. And so the ordinances that you're going to vote on tonight that indicates the property owner is another entity called LJ S Restaurants, Inc. or LLC, I'm not sure which one is referenced because I don't have the ordinances, that's just a false statement. And it's known to be a false statement at this point. The deed vesting ownership in my client, LJ Remainder LLC, was filed in 1999 in the Washington County Land Records. It's been a matter of public record for 20 years, over 20 years. And the statute that is referenced in the ordinance now is for cleanup liens. And there are two different ones. Some of them are cleanup liens. This is a lien for $20,000 for knocking down a building. And the owner of that property did not have notice of this action going all the way back to February, up until about October of last year, did not know this was going to take place. By the way, the building was knocked down in July, I think, June or July. So it never received notice, couldn't do anything to stop it, and is now asked to pay for it. And if it doesn't pay for it, it'll have a lien and potentially lose its property, all without any notice that this action was going to take place. I think this is a misstep that the council is going to take if it's going to proceed in removing people's property regardless of the condition without giving notice to the property owner. There were some comments about, well, what else could we have done? We followed the law. Well, I would argue it wasn't followed in as it relates to raising a building. Perhaps it was followed regarding a cleanup lien. But even those ordinances are incorrect because the property owner, which stated, you guys have already passed that, that states LJ S Restaurants, Inc. or LJ S Restaurants, LLC, two different entities, both received notices. There was no consistency in which one it was directed to. That is not the owner of the property, never has been the owner of the property. LJ Remainder LLC has been the owner of the property all along. It never received notice of this. And regardless of what a state statute or your city ordinance says, that doesn't trump the U.S. Constitution and the Arkansas Constitution, which says people can't be deprived of their property without due process. Notice of the action is a minimum amount of due process that needs to be afforded. It wasn't afforded in this case. And I think this is bad policy, and I think it's wrong that this can take place without notice to the property owner. I'm happy to answer questions. This is, it's a convoluted sort of fact pattern. The bottom line, though, is, is the owner of the property, which is not in dispute, never received notice. And the ordinances that y'all are going to vote on say that LJ S Restaurants, Inc. or LJ S Restaurants, LLC is the property owner, that's false. And it's known to be false. Simply putting in parentheses, the actual owner, I don't think cures that problem. So I would ask that you deny this motion to place the ordinance, so at least some resolution can be seen. But putting this ordinance on, you're voting on something that factually is not correct. And so I'd ask that you vote it down. And I'll answer any questions you have, and I appreciate y'all listening and your time.
I, thank you, Larry. I, while we were sitting here, I pulled up the parcel card on the assessor's website because I did it at the committee meeting last week, and it still had the property owner name and address that were used by the city for all of these notices. And I noticed that the property owner name has been changed, but the address is still the same, the address that we sent the certified letters to.
You know who made the change?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't, I just didn't know if you knew who made the change.
I don't.
Okay.
I haven't talked to anyone at the county, so...
I'm pretty sure the change was made because of the call I made to the assessor's office.
Okay.
The address is the same. It's just they changed the name to LJ Remainder LLC, but the address is still that Fort Smith address that's been on there all along.
And of course, the Secretary of State, you can look up anybody's address that's registered with the Secretary of State. And it's interesting, all the notices that were sent, even though it was sent to the wrong entity, it wasn't sent to their principal address that's listed with the Secretary of State, and it wasn't sent to their registered agent, which is also listed with the Secretary of State. And so, and I think the state statute also as well has other requirements when there is an entity that is an out-of-state entity, which LJ S Restaurants, Inc., LJ S Restaurants, LLC, LJ Remainder LLC, they're all out-of-state entities. So, you know, I think that, in my view, there's many levels of problems with the notice that was given. All of it could have been corrected with a simple title search. It's a couple hundred dollars. And y'all get to tax that onto the bill that you charge the owner. So it's not like the city is going to have to eat additional expenses if it takes that extra step when it's getting ready to send a bulldozer to a piece of property to remove a building.
So were all of these notices, all eight of them, they were all the same name and address on every single one? Is that correct?
It's the address that's still on file with the county assessor right now.
It's not, and I've got the letters here. Some were sent to a P.O. box, some was sent to a physical address. All of them were in Fort Smith. The last one in September, after it was done, was sent, was back to the P.O. box, and it was also sent to the registered agent of LJ S Restaurants, Inc. or LLC, whichever the appropriate one was. But the notices that were sent throughout it, and it may be confused a little bit between the cleanup liens for the cleanup work that was done and then the raising that was done, but they were all not consistent. Some had the Inc., some had the LLC. It's a minor difference, but they're different entities, and there were different addresses used.
Were the ones that were paid versus the ones that were unpaid, were there, was there a significant difference?
I think, I don't know where the notices were sent for last year, the previous ones that were paid. I don't know.
Well, I can tell you that the, on page 57, where it's got the list of the dates that we cleaned it, July 1, August 19, September 16. I will tell you, a letter was sent notifying them of all three of those, and the city got payment on one of them.
And they were all sent to the same... Thank you.
And just for context, where they went was a tenant of the owner. It was along John Silver's. It was a tenant that is, that I believe is LJ S Restaurants, Inc. or LJ S Restaurants, LLC. It was a tenant who at one point occupied the property, but it wasn't the owner. And so whether they passed along some to the owner or not, I don't know, sitting here. I just know the owner never received any notice. And I don't think that's in dispute.
Hey Larry, I want to just make sure that you didn't misspeak on something.
Okay.
Or that you understood what you said. I'm pretty sure I heard you say something about if the city wants to proceed with removal of property regardless of condition. You're not suggesting we remove this property regardless of its condition, are you?
Well, I mean...
I'm pretty sure that's what you said.
Well, and I think what the statute says is that, I think it uses the word unsightly. And so I think if the city determines that a building is unsightly, that statute authorizes removal.
Okay.
I don't know what I asked...
So it's not regardless of condition? It is because of the condition.
Okay, I guess if it's unsightly, then that would be the condition. I don't think because of a health or safety violation that it's limited to just that. So...
Didn't we have a health or safety violation in that building? Wasn't there homeless, and then a fire from, from something?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't there a health and safety issue? Wasn't there homeless individuals squatting in that building and there was a fire?
Yes. I see Ron's up there shaking his head, yes.
Okay.
We've dealt with this property, as I mentioned, since 2020, and I understand Larry's point, but, you know, we pull up a parcel card, and it says property owner is this, and here's an address, and we're sending letters, we're getting certified receipts back signed, we're getting checks. You know, we don't, we think everything's floating along just fine, so.
I don't think you could tell who signed those green cards. I've looked at them. I can't tell who it is. I would ask if you could tell who signed those cards or not.
Are there any, yeah, we have a motion, a second. Are there any other questions for anyone? No? No one else? Okay.
Thanks for your indulgence.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Has the emergency clause?
Does the emergency clause be adopted?
Sorry.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 80.
So as Ernest mentioned, the item at 11B concerns the same property at 983 West Sunset has to do with a cleanup lien on that property, as he described. This ordinance was also forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval, and the title of the ordinance is, "An ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move ordinance pass.
I just wanted, since it came up, on page 73 of your packet is the letter that I was referring to that was sent, that referenced an abatement on July 1st, August 19th, and September 16th, and the city, and there's also the certified receipt showing it was signed for, and there's also a receipt in there showing where they paid on October 19th of 2022. They paid one of those, which was the latest abatement, which was September 16th, so this ordinance pertains to the July 1st and the August 19th, 2022 abatements.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 11B. Are there any other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency, ordinance and emergency clause, carry 80.
And the last item, ironically enough, is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring emergency, property located at 305 Hay Robert Soak.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Are there any, is there anyone that needs to speak to this property before we vote? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Watson? Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Fidjirous?
Yes.
Powell?